And to honor the, the requests of, of our employees, our residents, and all those that fall under our responsibility. We ask you for wisdom and, and guidance in all the decisions we make. And also, we ask for your continued recovery for Ed Dyer. And it sounds like his surgery went well and, and so we pray for blessings on him. And all those who need your care. We ask this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Okay. Steve, are you participating or just watching?
I am, if that's okay, if you can hear me.
Yes, it is. Glad to have you. Unless, uh, do you want to run the meeting from afar?
Absolutely not. I, I would appreciate it if you would and Doug, if you would lead with the motions, I'll just kind of tail along at the end.
Okay. Thanks, Steve.
Okay, you know, I rule with a tight fist here, so.
Hey, you got a lot of time to make up.
Okay, we've got some minutes from July first, twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, I did look through them. I did not see any, Steve. I did not see any additions or corrections myself.
Agreed.
So if you don't have anything, Stan, did you have anything?
No.
Okay. In that, in that regard, I will make a motion that we approve the minutes from the last meeting.
I'll second that motion.
All right, motion carries.
That was your copy. I forgot to give it to you.
Tony, do you have anything for us?
I do, if you'll give me a second here.
Too old to run up and down that quick.
Plus, I'm stopping time for Cotton so he can run up and get a paper out of the office that he need.
How many new claims while we're waiting?
Oh, gosh. Have you, uh, had a chance to look those over?
Yeah, I did this morning. I, I did have one question on Juan. Um, a large one.
What's that total of?
Hold on, I'll get that for you in a second.
Did you want to copy it or?
The total for claims is nine, nine forty-five, eight seventy-one fifteen.
Eight seventy-one.
Right, and, uh, just hang on a second, do this.
I might take a look at that laser stand.
I'll wait that.
Hey, Tony, while Doug's looking. Yeah, that, that big one for strategic solutions out of the ARPATHONS.
That's the two hundred fifty.
Which project was that for?
That's the one for the clerk's office for scanning.
That's what I said.
It's the same one that I was looking for, Steve.
It's the scanning clerk's office.
Okay. Okay, so, uh, with that being said, Stan, you have any, any problem with claims?
No, I looked them over and, and I did not have any questions.
So what we're doing, Tony, we're, we're asking, you're asking for approval of nine forty-five, eight seventy-one fifteen, right?
For accounts payable, yep.
Okay.
And then here are the minutes.
Right, we already approved the minutes.
Yeah, I'll use guys.
Oh, yeah, the sign, okay. Steve, I, I move that we accept the claims.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion carries to approve the claims as presented.
And next.
He signs that.
And let me get something else you got.
Tony, do you usually sign for Steve when he's on video or?
Yes, we are allowed to signs in somebody's remote. Mark Burry told me this years ago, if Steve approves it, gives approval, I can sign his name and put remote out by the side of it. The cat can't vote.
Thank you, man.
Okay, well, actually, I would let it vote. I have a couple myself. Yeah, okay. Next, I'm going to present for the county treasurer, the monthly treasures report, which I just handed to you. For entering into the record.
Any problem with us, man?
No, no, it looks like it balanced.
Okay, Steve, uh, uh, treasures report, uh, I move that we accept.
Second.
You know, now, this is an instance where I think it would be an advantage for us to have a document reader. Uh, because I, I don't know if you have the same document in front of you.
I, I do not, but you're right, Stan. We've talked about that before. I don't know what, kind of exactly how that would work, but.
So that might be something I might talk to Mike about and see what it would take.
And what exactly would that person do?
Well, like this, I could take this document and put it under a document reader. And then Steve would be able to see the same thing.
Oh, okay, okay. In other words, what you're talking about is something, if one of us is on remote.
It's like an overhead projector only, you'd be able to see.
It looks actually exactly like an old overhead projector, but it's just digital and would put it up on the computer screen.
Okay. Yeah, well, you're just gonna have to trust us that this thing's good, Steve.
I, I got you. E- even, even more than trust, you guys, I trust dad.
And it's just at the end of the record anyway, so.
Yeah, that's right, right.
You're not actually approving it.
Okay, we didn't make, we didn't make the motion you seconded, right, Steve?
All right, motion, motion carries.
Okay, now we have a Eastern Alliance Workers' Comp approval in the amount of one thousand seven twenty-four thirty-nine. One thousand seven twenty-four thirty-nine for workers' comp to Eastern Alliance.
Lou, did we accept the, uh, amount to Eastern Alliance? One, one thousand seven hundred twenty-four thirty-nine, right, Tony?
Yep.
I'll second.
I should have scooted over there so you.
And then Stan can sign that.
They stand to sign that.
And Steve's behalf.
Okay, that's done. Lou's second, Tony. It's been done.
Got it. Okay. Next, we have. Here, I gotta get rid of some. Okay, next, we have allied weekly health insurance claims. And those are in the amount of twenty thousand four seventy-three fifty-five. Twenty thousand four seventy-three fifty-five. All medical. And there is one small adjustment. So twenty-four seventy-three fifty-five, I verified the claimants.
I moved that we accept the allied weekly in the amount of twenty thousand four hundred and seventy-three fifty-five, which is all medical. With one adjustment.
Second.
Okay, moving second in, that carries. Allied claimants approved.
Okay. What else I have here? Get Eastern Alliance. You know, that's the leader. You got a copy of the agenda, Doug? Yeah?
Yes, I did.
This was actually your copy of the minutes. I forgot to get to you. I thought I'd have more time between meetings.
No problem.
Okay. I'm going to, if it's all the same to Stan. If Dan wants to go ahead and come up and have your commissary report.
Um, the only, the only thing is I was gonna read a couple notes or do, Doug, do you want me to read or Steve, do you want me to read the engineer notes? You've got them in front of you too.
I, I do have them in front of me.
Eric, Eric here, yeah, take, give one Jimmy.
Okay, let's real quickly, I'm, I'm just gonna briefly. Uh, he's got his end dot quarterly report that he completed, uh, his end dot countywide bridge inspection contract.
Copy of the engineer's report in your file.
And he did receive the executed contract for the next bridge inspection cycle. And, uh, uh, he had a small correction on a small structure by ish excavating. And they worked on a different structure than he reported, so no, no major reports, but just kind of wanted to run through this for, for his benefit. He was not, not able to be here for our meeting this morning, so. There we go.
Thanks, Stan.
Yeah.
You're up, Sheriff.
Just have a commissary report that statutory you cert before, I have to give it to you twice a year, but as July first of this year, it's now gonna be quarter. It's one of the changes legislators made, so you'll see this by the fifteenth of the preceding month of the quarter. Uh, if you have any questions, answer it. I think, did you email that to those guys also?
Yeah, I, yeah.
So, but I have to submit a port, a report still, so this will be, I'm asking for you to accept this report.
I looked through it, uh, on my email. I didn't see any, any, any questions that I had.
So we just need a motion to enter that into record.
Correct.
I'll make that motion, Steve, that we enter the, uh.
I'll second.
Good motion.
And this is still a six-month one, right?
This is six months. After this, we'll go quarterly. Correct.
I mean, even starting this year. I mean, in three months from now, you're gonna have another one.
Correct, starting from July first for the next three months. It'll be quarterly after.
What, what was the reason for, for doubling the?
Well, it's, it's not hard, but it's just with, with some of the issues that some of the sheriffs had in the past, uh, that state board of councilmen involved in. It's, a lot of this came back down to the Clark County Sheriff, Jamie Knoll, who's spending the next eighteen years in prison, I think. Um, they just wanted more transparency. In my opinion, uh, several people failed down there, uh, council failed, commissioners failed, because they weren't looking at the report. Uh, so they want us to permit, put the report out more often and for me, it's not hard. It's a push of a button. I print the report. I mean, it's just remembering to do it.
I, I guess that brings up a point from a legal standpoint, Clayton. Do we as commissioners need to enter it into record or do we need to approve it?
Specifically what, the commissary report? I would approve it. I would, I would enter it. I would just enter it into the record and approve it.
Because I'm not sure what you're. I'll disagree with you a little bit on that because they, entering the record is just showing I submitted it to you.
Right.
But approving it, you'd have to be able to look at it. You don't, you don't know what it gives you.
What, what are you, what are you asking us to do? Approve it?
To accept the report that I have submitted it to you and I'm fulfilling the statutory requirements.
Into record.
Into record, yes.
So we're.
That's just a statutory requirement. Your approval to enter. Shoot, shoot that to me when you have a chance. I think you've had before, but then you, never mind. You don't have to, you don't have to approve it again. So now I actually agree more with what the sheriff was saying. It's not something that you can really approve because you don't really have the, the background to say yes or no, or this looks good. But he's just fulfilling statutory requirement of stating on the record, I have presented this to the commissioners.
But when, but when you talk about the council and commissioners having some liability in what happened with Clark County, I almost wondered what our liability is here.
Well, and I, I guess I don't mean liability, but there was just.
Accountability.
Responsibility.
Things that were happening down there. And honestly, uh, I've been in six years and I've never received a question about the report. Um, a six-month report, that's a forty-page document and I don't know how close you guys look at it. And it's not so much you, it's more council. Uh, they're, they're the ones that have the more oversight of that because it's fiscal. Uh, uh, but I've never received any questions about it, so.
You know, you know, Sheriff, one of the things that I think going to every three months, hopefully it will cut that forty-page report down to twenty pages. And I'll, I know I'll be more inclined to look at it, print it off and look at it if it's a shorter report than if it's a forty-page report. I, so I, I kind of see some validity in having them change the frequency because it's such a long report.
It is, and if you see on the side, uh, far right side, it, it tells you what it was, what category it was being spent by. Because we, we're restricted by statute of what we can spend that money on. And that's what it kind of said that on the one side. And that's what we have that ordinance on, that I don't have to come and ask, ask the council for, like, if I want to sponsor a local baseball team. Uh, before, I had to go in and ask that permission. Now that's in the ordinance that you guys approved, so I don't have to ask that every time. Because it doesn't fall under those eight categories. The ninth category is the fiscal body and the sheriff both have to agree. And then it can be spent on that. Well, we've developed that ordinance that covers a lot of that outside the, the eight categories. And as long as it's one of those things that I don't have to ask every time. But anything outside of that, I still have to come to the fiscal body to ask, hey, this is what I want to do. It falls outside anything we've agreed on. Are you okay with it? They say yes, and I say yes. Then it's all said and done, but, uh, we have, we have had sheriffs around the state make errors, uh, no doubt about it. And, uh, some of them were, and that's why I asked you to submit, uh, to accept the report, because sometimes the excuse was, well, do it what we, do what you've always done to pass. Well, but he would never ask in an open meeting. And so then he fell outside the scope of his requirement to get permission and that's what some sheriffs have got jammed about. So, I mean, we're just trying to tighten up. We are now gonna get training by state board of accounts twice a year. Uh, there's gonna be, next week, they're got our summer conference. They're gonna be there. Uh, and they are requiring, uh, at the new sheriff's school or every two years, the sheriff and or Steve, this person, he designate as like the bookkeeper, in my essence Regina Bloom. We have to go and get training from state board of accounts. So this, it, it's been a good thing, but it's a bad thing that happened that created a good thing.
So this is one of the things that when state board of accounts audits the county, this is one of the things that they.
Oh, they look at this extremely hard because this is an account that, um, kind of like, uh, I, I think a lot of departments, they have, uh, what, Tony, what's that called where it's not, uh, it's not overseen account? It's a.
Lot of discretion in there, isn't there?
I missed the first part of it.
Like, um, the commissary accounts and an account, but the prosecutor has the deferral fund, the auditor's office has, what are those accounts names?
Is it discretionary account?
Yeah, discretionary account that really no one controls, but the department had. Well, large counties, this is millions of dollars. That, like Allen County, Marion County, Vanderburg County, they have millions of dollars in their commissary account. And they buy ten vehicles out of it every year. It supplements their budget. So obviously, ours is not that big. Uh, but it's still, if you go through that, you'll see what I purchased that's, doesn't come out of any budget cost, so it's not costing our taxpayers any money. The inmates are paying for it.
Yeah.
So, but.
Yeah, I was gonna ask, every dollar that's on this report is actually coming from inmates one way or the other, right?
Correct. That is zero tax dollars.
Yeah.
That is correct. So having oversight is great because it, obviously, in the history of sheriffs, this is one of the biggest things that gets them in trouble, is misuse of the commissary. Uh, because really no one has access to those books except state board of accounts and they look at it closely. Uh, and I'm fine with that.
So now we do too, so.
Right.
Uh, I'll take questions anytime, uh, but it, as far as generating quarterly, that's something that we as sheriffs, the ISA, when I was the president, we said, let's do quarterly. And some guys kind of got, said, why are we, it's a push of a button, guys, on our software. Print out the ten pages and submit it. I mean, it's not hard. Like, it used to be a handwritten ledger, I can understand that, but nowadays, it's not hard. And we want to be transparent. Uh, we've worked great with the state board of accounts putting this legislation together. And we're pretty sure, uh, it, it's gonna work. It's just if everybody does their jobs, then this is, we don't need more regulations with it.
Very good. Thank you.
Anything, Sheriff?
All right.
All right. Okay, Brad?
Man, I know the sheriff took Nate's place. He did all right.
It's hard to replace Nate.
It is. Tony, do you usually get a bid tab or do you just want to fill it out?
I usually get. Like, but then I get the filled without, one filled out as well, so. I mean.
So, good morning, gentlemen. This morning, uh, we're reopening the single axle body build, which is the bed, underbody scraper, the snow plow and all that. So, yep.
Mr. LaFever, are you representing one of the companies? Would you care to introduce yourself and your company, Brent?
Brent LaFever, WA Jones.
Thanks for coming in.
Yep.
And WA Jones is the only bid we.
This is the only one we have received.
Oh, the only one you received?
That's it.
It's a slam dunk there.
I didn't see another one that they brought up while I was counseling.
Yeah, the dump body, the belly blade, the snow plow blade.
Is that still out of Columbia City primarily? Is that where it used to be? Yeah, Columbia City, yeah.
Good. Got their non collusion. Specs and all that. It's like the total for all the equipment for the single axle chassis that we have on hand is one hundred thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred and forty-two dollars. One hundred thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred and forty-two dollars.
That's for, uh, I'm, I'm just.
That's one, one truck, one single axle. Dump body, the belly blade, the front plow, the, we had a spreader, a new spreader.
Everything but the chassis.
Everything but the chassis, yes. The chassis we already have.
Well, you guys, no problem. You got everything you need. Get non collusion, bid specs on. Well, in that regard, I, I move that we accept the, uh, WA Jones bid on the, the, uh, bed and scraper and everything else.
So, Les, you want to take it into consideration first or what do you wanna?
No, we're gonna suggest, since there was only one, that we just go ahead and accept the bid.
Guys, did that number look, look, uh, looked similar to what you were expecting?
Yes, yeah, because, uh, a tandem axle runs around the one sixty-five to one eighty, depending on the equipment. So I, that, that's right there where I figured it would be.
Okay, very good.
How far are you behind? How far are you behind putting those together, Brent? I mean, are you a month behind? Do you have all the stuff you need?
The only, the only thing we're gonna have to wait on is the hydraulic system. That's gonna be about four months.
About four months, so. So it'll, the one you have now will last that long?
Oh, yeah. And then they got a cha, they got a tandem chassis of ours up there. They're getting ready to start on now, so they'll, they'll, hopefully they'll finish that one and then ready to start this.
And that's, the price that you gave us is considering if there's any value besides, uh, scrap, that's, that's included in the bid, right, Brent?
No, no, there's, there's no trade in value. That's just.
I meant, yeah, but the, they get, they keep the old bed. We don't, right?
No, we, we'll sell the, we'll sell the old chassis and the old dump truck when we get to doing.
Oh, I see. Okay, okay. Well, anyhow, Steve, I made the motion.
Yep, I'm second.
Okay, motion carries, so.
Only other thing I have is an update for chip sealing. We got about thirty-five miles done so far here in the last couple of weeks. The guys are out there working on it as we speak. That's where I'm heading after this.
Once again, I don't know if you want to reiterate, but I, I keep getting questions on, uh, a new paved road. Why, why were chips sealing a, a new paved road? So if you want to kind of explain that for the purposes of people.
I was actually planning on doing that.
Oh, good.
See, I'm on, so basically what happens, like you're saying, is, is that road, one of the roads we paved up there was three or four years ago, was paved. These roads start to show their age. You start to see cracks developing them. And if people notice as they drive down the road, you know, probably one, a month ago, the guys were out patching. When you, where they see those short patches, those are actually cracks that run with the road too. So the guys will go out and they put down that one patch on all them spots and then we come back and all the crew go out and they chip seal the whole thing. So basically, even on that road, it was just paved a few years ago. It's showing its age. And by chip sealing, we seal it back up with the oil and we put an additional wear surface on it to get more life out of it. Where, you know, if we leave that paved road go, those cracks and outlets start to develop and the holes.
Like, like, for example, uh, you just did three hundred north.
Correct.
What's the plan for that?
So it'll probably be.
It'll probably be four, five years, depending on the road, on how it holds up. But once it starts developing those cracks, then we'll go in and chip seal it and get it. And like five hundred west that we paved last year, I assume that here in, in a few years, we'll, we'll go and, and seal that back up. Uh, another thing that's adding besides sealing the cracks and, and adding that wear surface, it's, it's also adding traction. You know, you get, you get a new asphalt road or one that's starting to, to get some age to it. And if it's a little wet, it gets a little slick. And you get some, you throw some stone on there and stick it down with some oil and it, and now you have something that your tires grip to if you need to stop quickly.
So it's also safety aspect on that too.
But you're using the same, you're using the same stone on a paved, or a brux paved as you do on our own county.
Yep. Yeah, and so definitely too, the cycle runs north half the county. We can get seven to ten years out of one layer of chip seal. You know, down south, it's a little, we gotta have to do it more often, three to five years normally. And that's just the, the way it is.
Army traffic, yeah.
And then also, that new pavement isn't cheap. So by doing this, we can help prolong the life of the new pavement also and get more years.
Well, and like Nate Rubenplug likes to talk about, we've got an asset improvement plan, but we also have an asset management plan. And so when you look at the, the total value of the infrastructure we have, you know, that management is pretty important.
Yes, that is correct.
In addition to your chip and seal work, I know there's always some, some of our own roads that during hot weather, super hot weather, you know, the oil comes up and the stones disappear.
Yeah, that week it was in the mid nineties.
Yeah.
And, and I'm just saying, you know, with them guys being busy chips sealing, I mean, I actually went out, I, I did a couple, few areas that were.
Sprinkle stone on top.
And the guys then did some other areas too when they had time, but yes.
That's good. Glad you do that because people don't like getting tar on their vehicles for sure.
I don't like them getting tar on their vehicles either. I don't like to see that black bleeding through. I just, I just don't like it.
It happens in hot weather.
Other than that.
All right, thank you, guys.
Okay, Steve, you have anything?
No, thanks, guys.
All right, let me look. Okay, Rick, what do you have for us today?
No, there's lots of little things going. Over in the clerk's office, noticed this morning, I got a leak in an area on the west side. I've called it in. It's, of course, it's way up there. Just glad it's not real, real hot out right now.
So they're dripping down into the office?
Yeah, it's on the ceiling tile. It's ceiling tile like this. There's a spot.
Okay.
At least we know where, I know where it is. So as soon as I get there, we'll get it fixed. Bathroom's the same thing.
Again?
Again, so. Anyway. Uh, other than that, you guys, anything?
I mean, okay, was it the same problem toilet paper again?
Yes. I can, I can show it to you right now. I, I just took the cap off of it and looked again. It's, it's plump. I'll see what I can do by getting it dug out. It's dry now, so. That's what it is.
Okay, well, we got, we're gonna have to, have to make a change on something on this. Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll take care of it.
All right, thank you, Rick. All right, Ian, what do you have for us?
So we're very blessed the community corrections that commissioners have a line item in their budget for indigents. And that covers people who are unable to pay the lump detention fees, whether that's as a result of just getting out of incarceration or medically unable to work and our juvenile population. We had that budget slashed years ago by council because we weren't using it all and we started the year out with ten thousand dollars. Uh, we've had an increase in the number of juveniles we've monitored so far this year. Uh, we've monitored a total of seven juveniles for five hundred and eighty-eight days of monitoring. As you know, cost of electronic monitoring versus the cost of having a juvenile in a juvenile detention facility is, it's a huge savings, right? Um, we've also had eight adults. Uh, one of those was medically indigent. The rest of them were, uh, as a result of being incarcerated, coming out to us. Um, and most of them went to crossroads. Um, we only allow our indig, our adult indigents to be on for thirty days. They have to find work. Uh, and also during that time, they have to do community service to help give back. Uh, and so I'm here today because I have money and it's July. And so I don't know how you want to do this, whether we go in the red and continue on at the end of the year, make it right. Or I think we've submitted an additional appropriation for fifteen thousand, which we would estimate get us through the rest of the year.
What just, what's been spent from January?
Ten thousand.
How much?
Ten thousand.
Ten thousand. But a, a normal year in the pad, what's that take?
You know, it's hard because I looked at last year's numbers and we had seven juveniles for the entire year for seven hundred and five days of monitoring. And we're in seven juveniles now for the year and it's only six months. Uh, and so, uh, if you watch the news, we know that juvenile crime is out of control just to the north of us. And we're fortunate, I think, obviously, that we don't have the violence in Adams County that they're seeing in Allen County. But there's definitely a change in our juvenile population. And so, and the fact that Circuit Court is, you know, putting, putting people, putting juveniles on our program in lieu of sending them out away, uh, almost oftentimes as a last chance. Um, and we've been pretty effective at that. Um, and we've been pretty effective at that. So it's kind of hard to predict how much we need and how much we're gonna need for the next six months. But I think we erred on the side of not wanting to come back again four or five months again to ask you another time if we don't have to.
If you all approve this, it would then go to the council next month for their approval to do the additional appropriation.
Uh, what, what are, what kind of an additional appropriation are you asking?
I'm asking for fifteen thousand to get us through the rest of the year. And if we wouldn't spend it, then it would just fall back into your fund, so.
So, you know, I noticed, just reading the Fort Wayne Journal on this, you know, fifteen, sixteen-year-old kids killing people in Allen County. You know, don't know who it was, maybe Chief Police in Fort Wayne said, yeah, hey, we're not, we're not the overseer of your children. Yeah, parents has got to step in somewhere and be accountable for where they are and what they're doing, but we know the story there. So, well, Steve, what are you, what are you thinking on the?
I, 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 Ian, I think the program you run is an excellent program and I think it's money well spent. Obviously, you make a good point how how efficient it is to have them on home monitoring versus incarceration. And uh, and and your successful program, I think, uh, I certainly support your request and and uh, and think it makes sense.
Thank you.
Danny, comments in there?
Uh, no, no, I agree.
Well, I think, I agree with what Steve said. It is just did what he said. And so I'm, in in that regard, I would make a motion that we uh, uh, ask for an additional appropriation next month for fifteen thousand.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, motion carries.
I also just want to let you know some bad news. Um, legislature cut community corrections budget uh by about eight percent for the DOC's entire community corrections budget and it's going to affect Adams County. Uh, it's gonna affect community corrections probation and the sheriff's jail treatment program. Uh, I'll let probation and and the sheriff share on their own what what their cut is. But we're, we're cut about twenty-four thousand dollars, which is about eight percent of our, our budget from the DOC. So, um, we're going to be making some changes to our proposed twenty twenty-six budget, um, and.
Are we gonna talk about that at our meeting next week?
Absolutely. And uh, we just found out about it uh right before I left for vacation last week. And and we knew something was coming, although it was hush, hush, nobody, nobody knew what exactly and how they were going to cut it. Um, and when I sent an email asking for more exact reasons behind the twenty-four thousand, I I got a blanket email from DOC, basically, didn't give me any answers, so.
Do you, is there any, is there other options than personnel when you're cutting?
Honestly, we're probably gonna look at cutting some contract services for personnel. Uh, we've been running a person short with no administrative assistant for over a year. It's wearing on our staff. Uh, we're getting an increase in the number of participants. And and I, I think that I can move some money around and potentially look at replacing that administrative assistant that's been missing. But have custom services in the meantime, so that's probably.
I guess that's up to your meeting next month.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just, I'm just making you aware that they cut us and so.
Hey, Ian, Ian, just ju- just know from my perspective, I don't know that there's a a better investment for taxpayer dollars than what what goes into your program. And uh, you know, when we, when we fund programs with grant money, it's always, you know, the, the, the money may run out and then what are you gonna do? Uh, I don't think there's a question in my mind, what are we gonna do here? We're gonna keep funding your program one way or another. So just uh keep up the good work and 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 obviously, we need you to manage that money as as efficiently and effectively as you can. But uh, but just know that from from my perspective, you've got my support, whatever it takes to to keep your program up and running and healthy.
Well, Stephen, it was about nineteen years ago right now when I was here for the very first time for commissioners and council, uh requesting the approval to move forward with applying for that grant. And and that, the big question I remember to this day was what happens if they won't, if they stop funding us? And so in going on nineteen years, this is the first cut that we've actually seen, so.
Yeah, I was, uh, Steve, I can remember when Ian was a one-man show in the bottom of the courthouse. Is that nineteen years? Is that the nineteen you're talking about? Wow.
Yeah, we're getting old.
Hey, you're good. You're just a kid. Okay, I I agree with Steve's comment. So I think, I mean, if we had to uh house the, some of the people you're working for, the cost would be astronomical, so we appreciate your work.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
Yep, thanks Ian.
See you next week.
All right. All right, uh, and I don't know if Clayton's gonna present this or if Mark is as far as the proposal to change the zone map from R one to agric- uh agricultural in Root Township.
I can just present that, I've got that. So on that, um, on June twenty-fifth, the Plan Commission uh provided a recommendation that just says, be advised pursuant to Indiana Code thirty-six, seven, four, six hundred. Um, Ed Sec on July nineteenth, after a public hearing, the Advisory Plan Commission of Adams County, Indiana, gave due consideration to a petition to change the zone map filed by Linda Cornette at.
Was that July or June?
Sorry, June, June, yes. Um, at one eight four one East Belmont Road Decatur, uh, they had come before the Plan Commission requesting that the zoning of that property be changed from R one, which is single-family residential, to A as in agricultural, agricultural. Um, the land is located in section thirty-five of Root Township, um, which is shown on the attached map um, to the Plan Commission's uh recommendation. Uh, and that came with a recommendation of due pass uh with a five zero vote. So with that, uh, I brought with me today, um, what would be numbered, ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash nine. Which would be uh the ordinance accepting, um, if if that is what the commissioners decide to do, would be accepting that recommendation and rezoning that specific portion of property. Uh, the legal description is attached as Exhibit A, um, from R one residential to A agricultural.
What was the address on that? Does it say?
It is one eight four one East Belmont Road Decatur.
Uh, Steve, just for your information, Stan too, uh, I was at that Plan Commission meeting. And uh, when it was presented, uh, there was some discussion, but everyone, all Plan Commission members, like Clayton said, it was five oh. Uh, it was kind of a noted, not much controversy, not much discussion. And they highly recommended that the commissioners change this from uh R one to A. Rezone, so with that being said, uh, Steve, you have any comment?
I don't. I I got it pulled up here on the map. I know what you're looking at. And I, I, I recall the discussion, whether I watched the Plan Committee, Commission meeting on video, or maybe I was even there, but I do remember the conversation.
Okay, Stan, you have any?
Uh, no, I'm, is that right next to uh Bell Brook or where's that?
Yeah, it's right, it's right at the intersection of two hundred and, or the angled road comes up.
Oh, right.
Two, two hundred and seven hundred and Belmont Road all intersect right there. It's at that uh would be the northwest corner of that intersection.
Kind of a triangle piece, isn't it?
Yeah.
For information, the, the property as it sits has had a small horse barn on it with horses out there. And it just went for sale and some lady bought it. She planned on putting a couple of horses on it. And then because it changed hands and it got empty, people are going, wait a minute, that was grandfathered in from the first person because it was already that way. But everybody went, wait a minute, that's R one, can't have horses. So she was pretty devastated actually, because that's all she wanted to do is a few horses, like it, like it always had since. So that's, that was the reason for the rep.
And Mr. Chairman, Stan today, I guess, well, I move that the commissioners approve ordinance twenty twenty-five dash nine, which is the rezoning from R one to A.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion carries, thank you.
Yep.
Signatures for that one.
Looks like a good fit into the area. I certainly don't have any issues with it.
Very good. Mark, what do you have for us?
Please, I'm divisions. I'll change your son.
Oh, okay. Thanks, Eric.
All these are pretty.
Cut and dried?
Pretty cut and dry. This one lot, big rectangle, they're cutting two acres, which is this ordinary area at the bottom, even the rest.
Two acres is the minimal amount that they can.
Road frontage, obviously for both.
Okay.
That's the short story.
You probably can't see this, Steve, but it's a kind of a cut and dried deal here.
Yeah, I, I think I've got it up. I think I've got it up on my map here. I'm good with it.
Okay, I move we accept the uh home, what is it, homestead, the homestead, Root Township subdivision.
Second.
This says twelve hundred north, three hundred north, they kept moving north, maybe western.
Well.
North Minute Road.
Oh, you have to off ten minute road, okay, good now. That's good now, okay.
All the north roads, they technically say.
So, just out of curiosity, then eventually, is Mike working so, or a problem?
Yes.
That, so eventually he, he, he takes this and and enters it in there, right?
Yep.
How often does he do that, catch up?
I'm actually not sure how often he does it, so he's also on the committee. Now that he's a surveyor, he's on the design committee too. So he actually gets an early look and fixes things. It's actually, he's actually ahead of the game nowadays.
Yeah, that helps.
By the way, we're doing it. There's little uh things, we're, the design committee looks at setbacks, access, out of acres. He's, when he looks at stuff, he's looking at, did they spell the name right somewhere in the, in the big description? You know, he might find stuff like that early on, but didn't get found until later. That people.
Johnny Swartz, where's the location here?
All right.
One hundred south.
Two hundred east and one hundred south.
Okay.
One big rectangle.
How many acres is the, how many acres is this right here?
It is. I think sixty. Looks like sixty.
Sixty breaking four, he's, how many is he doing, three?
Three lots, we have one down here that's four point one. Lot three's twenty-eight, lot one's twenty-three.
Okay, now, just out of curiosity, if, if uh someone would come in and want to split this twenty-eight.
It would take a major subdivision at that point and then it'd take a rezone out of that to do that. Have to go to R one, or I mean, if it's gonna be for housing, you'd have to go to R one. So that's three lots that you're allowed by, by Meyer without having to reason. It'd be required to reason.
But right now, it's okay.
Yeah, there's nothing else they could do and keep it A. Save that one. This, this has access to the road. You can go right there. It's not even an easy.
This, this is already root frontage.
It's gonna be free up and down.
Actually, we had two sets of buildings on this parcel before we ever.
Yes, it's one big parcel.
With two sets of houses.
Yep, they split off and they did get some, uh, some variance work done. But there's a duck barn and maybe a child from this family that's gonna build a house back here. But far enough away that he gets his setbacks and he's gonna run this duck building. And the dad that used to own that, it's no longer.
I was saying they went through B Z A also.
Yeah.
Okay, well, uh.
They haven't, though, the house. So you know, I mean, this is, we'll have them do this exactly, but there's a house gonna be built and they did get a variance a little too close to that. It was still quite a ways away, wasn't it? We're close, but where they found good ground to put a septic in.
This, this, this force copman drain, is that, is that, that's a tile, not an open ditch, right?
Right.
Okay, I, I guess move the uh Johnny Swartz subdivision, be three different parcels, four point one acre, twenty-eight point five and twenty-seven point three, Steve, unless you have a, any comments on that?
No, move, I'll second.
Okay, motion carries.
They can sell duck to duck eggs.
I don't have any with them. I know it's a duck barn.
That's a duck barn.
It's meat or eggs, I'm not sure.
But the duck barn's already bit, it's already there.
It's been there for years. I think it's probably meat. I think they have a liquid pit on that side.
What's better, duck, duck, chicken egg or duck eggs? Which one's like?
No, I'd prefer regular eggs.
I've never had duck eggs, I don't know what the duck egg.
Well, the problem is there, whenever they pour the floor for these buildings, I always get a quack.
They're, they're both, Eric, put this way, they're both delicious if you're hungry enough.
Oh, that's right, okay, yeah, yeah. I want to get an ebiu egg, it's about as big as my head. Yeah, that's like, oh, what I want there, ebiu egg, gigantic.
I've eaten an ostrich egg, they're pretty good. Put your stenchles in it and glue the egg out. Those are good.
Fairway subdivision.
So this is also a three lot.
This is four hundred north.
Can't be split anymore unless it goes major.
Okay.
Four hundred north, one hundred west.
Four hundred north, one hundred west, okay.
It's out past Walmart.
Yeah.
Thirty even, they've got road frontage obviously here.
It's Walmart, Walmart Road though. That's okay.
Well, what, this one, bypass comes, comes through and then Walmart's at four fifty.
Okay, yeah.
And four hundred's, big four hundred is the road that takes you to Country Acres.
So that, so that's right across the road from Country Acres, right?
South, south across the road.
South of Country Acres, yes.
Country Acres would be right.
Yeah. They, they wanna, they're, they're doing three lots.
Here you can see it on the map.
Yeah, they're, they're doing a thirty.
They're splitting this one off. This is goofy, but unfortunately it meets our rules. Um, this is one lot, which includes this strip and this. This is the woods down here, and the woods goes clear here.
So that's gonna be their access back here.
To continue down, and then they've got lot two and lot three.
So, uh, so all they got access off four hundred north.
This is one, this is one lot, not blocked off by anything.
Uh.
And it's thirty foot wide, which is all you need, so.
So they got access here, here, here. Okay, well.
This is goofy, but.
It is. Who knows?
Doesn't not meet the rule, how's that?
Beats the rules, beats the rules. Any, any comment on Steve?
Nope, I'm good.
I move we accept the Fairway subdivision.
Second.
All right, motion carries. I suppose that was an ordeal, just keeping the woods.
Probably get down there, good, yeah. They had to, well, if they wanted to keep the woods and do it three times, they had to do it this way. Otherwise, if they had have done that the fourth one, huh?
Wouldn't happen.
Yeah.
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 All right, that's all I got.
Okay.
Okay, Steve, anything else for Mark while he's here?
No, thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Mark. Okay, we already heard from our tourism director. Uh, Clayton, did you have anything for us today?
Yes, uh, other than the ordinance that we just went over, um, and you gentlemen were here for, uh, when Julie Marie presented this to the council, um, a joint ordinance, which would be twenty twenty-five eight, which is short titled, a joint ordinance of the Adams County Board of Commissioners and Adams County Council, establishing a self-funded, non-reverting fund for use by the Adams County Information Technology Department. Uh, in short, as Julie Marie explained also, um, this would be a self, well, self-funded, non-reverting fund for which any and all of the, the basically, for lack of a better phrase, the billing that goes out to, um, the smaller um municipalities for, to which Adams County provides IT services. Um, all of the funds from that billing will now go into this fund in order to kind of keep similar but separate um, the, the overall IT budget. So di- are there any specific questions on that?
So will that show up as a different line item under one oh one six or whatever line it is?
It won't be under ninety-six hundred, it'll be four oh one six and it'll be only that.
It'll be, yeah, four oh one six and it'll just be that.
It'll show the expenses separate as well as the income separate?
Yeah, it'll show, yeah, the invoices that come in and go into it, this. This ninety-six hundred, as you know, IT's budget is going to be a lot lower going into twenty-six. Because not only did we do the four-oh-one-six for all those IT services outside of county government, which you can track now through that, through that, we're also creating outside of ninety-six hundred, uh, two other lines, cybersecurity, uh, that Mike and the auditor's office will be able to control, but it's outside of the ninety-six hundred now because IOT had come up here, and I think you read that meeting, I can't remember, and said, uh, you have to show us that you're working on cybersecurity or you won't be able to get grants from the state anymore. This fixes that, cause it has a cybersecurity line, what's the other line, uh? There's, 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 there's two, or there's, there's three, including four-oh-one-six.
No.
That Mike and our office has.
I thought the other one was GIS.
GIS, that's what I was trying to think of, yes. That's all separated out of ninety-six hundred now, so his budget's going to look, which he wanted, more like a normal department budget for his actual needs. The rest is all broken out, he'll still control it because only he and IT knows what to buy and what to do with these things.
Sure.
But council, commissioners, everybody else can look at them separately and see what's being spent. When we finally get around to doing it and we're working on a way of doing it, you guys and council will be able to see year by year what each department is spending on IT. But you can't really do that now.
Okay, so Steve, any questions on that, any thoughts?
No, fully support what we're trying to do there.
Twenty-twenty-five-eight.
Is that a motion?
I'll let Doug make the motion, but I'll second it.
Twenty-twenty-five-eight, I move that we approve twenty-twenty-five-eight, which addresses Clayton's description of what we're doing.
Second.
Okay, very good. Motion.
That was actually passed by council this morning, it's.
Yeah.
Joint Home Rule Fund.
And then the second, uh, opposed ordinance, it's also has to do with the fund, but it does not require a joint ordinance, just an ordinance by the commissioners. Um, what would be ordinance number twenty-twenty-five-ten, uh, short titled, an ordinance of the Board of Commissioners of Adams County, State of Indiana, for the establishment of a separate fund for use by the Adams County Building and Planning Department. Um, generally, this ordinance would set up a fund, um, and, and it would be noted and earmarked as the unsafe building fund. Provisions, and it would, it would be noted that this fund should be recognized and earmarked for use exclusively pursuant to the purposes set forth herein, which are authorized uses for the fund shall include but are not limited to identifying and locating parties with an interest in unsafe premises, the cost to retain a registered architect or engineer not otherwise employed by Adams County to examine and inspect unsafe buildings, the cost of surveys required for unsafe buildings, the cost of providing notice to all interested parties, all reasonable and necessary expenses incurred by the Adams County Building and Planning Department, not otherwise prohibited by state or federal law. Funding for this, this fund, um, will be, the monies collected by the Adams County Governate, Government, excuse me, and/or the Adams County Building and Planning Department, um, which, the, the revenue of which will be collected will be fines collected for violations of any statute, law, ordinance or code violation related to building safety and permit applications, uh, and this fund shall be a non, non-reverting fund, um, as it will be funded by those revenues.
Early, early on, in the first part you were reading, you talked about residences. So the unsafe buildings is not restricted to just residences, it's all unsafe buildings. I, I don't, I don't know what your reference was.
Correct, I think I said residence as in like the person, um, not residences, like an actual home, just a resident of Adams County, whether that be residential property or commercial property.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
I, I don't have any questions about twenty-twenty-five-ten.
Yeah, Steve?
No, I'm good. Now, we can, we can also fund that then, uh, from other methods, right? It doesn't just, um, would, would there be a, a, a budget line item to fund that every year? Or is that just gonna be a self-sustaining fund?
It's non-reverting and self-funded, so it's going to have to be similar to four-oh-one-six, it's going to have to be what Clayton read off there, where once those funds go in, uh.
They have to be used for that purpose.
Correct, correct.
Gotcha.
And then it, it would roll over to the following year, straight back into that fund instead of going into county general.
I mean, theoretically, when we, when we clean up a, a, uh, a property like that, all those costs are assessed against the property owner. But i- in, in, in practical matters, we probably won't collect all those back, but this is, this is the place where the, 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 the proceeds from those collection efforts will go.
Correct, correct.
Gotcha.
That being said, I move that we accept twenty-twenty-five-ten.
Second.
Okay, motion carries.
And then I have nothing else, um, in front of me, unless you all have any questions, that is the end of my time.
Um, Doug, do you have anything for? Steve?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Clayton, Dan, do you have anything for us?
Not, um, we'll do the compactage next week when Steve's here in person, if that's okay.
I'm interrupting the proceedings by having Stan sign something.
There.
You just gave me a car.
Well, we can do that while it's in the, in the boot gal.
Cadillacs around town.
That's right. Anything from the general public, Tom?
Hey, Steve? Steve?
Yes.
Prayers.
Say again?
I'll be praying for you.
Yeah, pray, pray for me not to be as stupid as, uh, a- as I am these days, pray, pray for a little more intelligence, how's that?
I'm not gonna get higher than one foot.
Okay, Tom, what do you have for us?
I come seeking permission, uh, there is a national, uh, it's a property record industry, uh, conference, uh, that I need to look an airline to if I can attend. So I'm in front of the commissioner seeking the, your approval to have my conference in Ohio there as a juror.
Okay.
It's, uh, I wasn't sure if I wanted to go, but there was a few things that really popped up that I would like to tell, um, there's possible new fraud protections that could lower the cost for the public, uh, AI and some standardizing how things do their, uh, D work, so.
Where's conference at again?
Uh, I believe it's Washington.
Yeah, I, I have no problem with Tom going to this conference, so, uh, I don't know if we're gonna need a motion or anything, but that, got, got my blessing.
I know the, the doc, it says that I gotta seek permission from.
Policy, policy says he has to seek, uh, commissioner's approval, actually, it just says chairman of the commissioners, but.
No, so Stan, it's up to you.
Yeah, so.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Brad?
Real quick, one thing I forgot to mention, um, we had talked about it, the railroad, I got hold of them then Wednesday and they got it there either Thursday or Friday, and trim back the crossings.
Very nice. Thanks for working with them on that.
Yeah, they're very good to work with, very understanding.
Good.
Oh, yes.
Yep.
Okay.
Now we can move our soybean oil out faster. All right, Steve, any reports?
Nothing that I can think of, guys.
Doug?
I'm good.
I don't have anything else either.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Okay, meeting adjourned.
Thanks, guys, see you next week.
Bye.